I'd like to call the Wednesday, April 11th, 2018 School Committee to Order. Would everybody please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag? Dr. Lancia, roll call. Veronica Bates.
Present.
Stephen Berry.
Present.
Odilia Harmon is excused. Noreen Poitras.
Here.
Mike Popovich.
Present.
Vice Chair Suzanne Joyce. Chair James Violet.
Here.
Students Madison Damon.
Here.
Chance Gagnon.
Here.
Form present. The next item is adjustments to the agenda. There are no adjustments. In your packets, you receive the minutes of the April 4th, 2018 School Committee meeting. If there's no objections, we'll let the minutes stand as presented. You do have communications in your packets. And we'll move right on to Student Council Report.
Alright, so over at the high school, Friday and all of next week are off for April break. On May 3rd, there'll be a blood drive sponsored by the National Honor Society. Academic recognition night will be from on May 8th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And AP exams start Monday, May 7th and will run through May 18th. Good luck to all of your AP kids.
Over at WRVC, on Monday, the center mourned the loss of a Tech One Culinary Arts student from Scarborough who took his life Friday night. With the help of Westbrook High School and TIP's students and staff of WRVC were able to grieve privately and within small groups to help cope with this sudden and tragic loss. Our thoughts go out to all that were affected by this. On Tuesday, WRVC hosted 200 freshmen from Gorham High School who toured the center through interactive program clusters. The National Technical Honor Society nominees have been released and will be inducted into NTHS on Thursday, April 26th at 7:00 PM in the Culinary Arts Dining Room. Of the 12 nominees, there is one from Westbrook, one from Wyndham, two from Gorham, and nine from Bonny Eagle. And that's it.
Thank you. We'll move on to public participation where anybody can speak on any agenda item for three minutes. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak? You got a full house? Nobody? Okay. Well, we'll turn it off to Dr. Lancia and his report.
Thank you, Mr. Violet. We do have a lot of people in the audience, a lot of students in the audience. We have a number of students who have made some outstanding achievements in athletics, the arts, and academics that we'd like to honor this evening for their great work, their hard work, and helping to make Westbrook the amazing community that it is. So if I could ask Mr. Groves, our Athletic Director, to come to the podium and we'll recognize some of our athletic accomplishments in the last several weeks. First, we'd like to recognize Niagua Bayek, who is an indoor track state champion. If you could speak about Niagua.
Sure, and I just want to say, you know, what a beautiful night to be here with everybody and to look at all the successes that have gone on, on the academic side, in the arts, in the athletics. There's so much positive things that are happening in this great school and this wonderful community. So it's a wonderful time to just take a minute and celebrate tonight some champions. So with that, I'd like to ask Coach Lally to come up, who works closely with Niagua, and I'd like her to say a couple of words on her behalf and have Niagua come on up, please.
Just to go through a few stats to let you know how amazing of a season Niagua had. So she's a conference champ in the high jump triple jump, state champ in the high jump triple jump. She went to New England's and scored first place, New England champion in the high jump. And then she went to Nationals and was the champion in the emerging elite triple jump. It's kind of confusing to explain, but with a personal best of more than a foot beyond her best going into the meet with a 39-foot one jump. She has the main all-time record in the triple jump. And then in high jump, she scored third place, which means she came home an All-American in high jump. Congratulations.
This is awesome that I could be here. Thank you very much, everybody.
Very proud of Niagua. Absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing. Next, we'd like to recognize Dominic Kreenen also for indoor track. Dominic, if you could come over.
We'd like to have also Coach Conrad come up and he could do an introduction for us. Thank you, Coach.
Good evening. I just wanted to recognize Dominic tonight. He had an excellent season. I've been coaching him for the past five years. It's been a pleasure to coach him. Some stats from the season, he won in the state meet, he won the 55-meter dash, no, hurdles, sorry, and long jump. And it took a place in a matter of five minutes, which was pretty amazing. He went from the 55-meter dash, I mean hurdles, walked over the long jump and won the long jump in five minutes. So that was pretty cool to see. He also scored 22 of the 26 points, which got us fifth place out of 25 scoring teams at the state meet, which is awesome. Thank you, Dom.
Just like to say thank you, guys, and it's great to be here tonight.
And next, we'd like to recognize our Unified Basketball Team, our state championship Unified Basketball Team.
So really exciting, and I do want to say overall, you know, with all of our student athletes and all the accomplishments they have, and it's so wonderful to recognize them. Also, all the coaches, all the work that they put in and the care and the love that they have and the skill that they teach our athletes, it's wonderful. So I'm excited. I'd like to call Coach Russell up, and I'd love to have him introduce some state champions.
So yeah, so actually, why don't you guys all just stand up and come on up here?
Now you're all on TV, so you gotta smile.
And that's kind of why I brought them all up here, but that's right. So I just want to say a couple of things just about Unified Sports and Unified Basketball in particular to our players. This has been our third year, and this has always been a goal for many of these kids who have been playing with us for three years. This program, I hope, stays with Westbrook High School for many years to come because it's done amazing things for these gentlemen and ladies. Sorry, don't start crying on me.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
You cry if you want to, girl.
And I just can't speak to volume of that and also the way the community has rallied around these guys and our program, and each and every one of these kids has been absolutely fabulous. And I would also have to mention our cheerleader over here. It was probably one of the loudest cheerleaders I've ever heard in my entire life, so. You know, and those of you that attended our games during the regular season, you'll know that we probably had more assists for the other teams than we did for our own team during the regular season, and it just shows the compassion that these guys have learned over the last three years. And, you know, come to playoff time, if you followed us into the playoffs, you could learn that the game quickly changed once we got into the playoffs, and the seasoned players that we have on this team adjusted very well to that and were able to bring home a state championship ball for Westbrook High School and the community.
Someone hold it up.
You want to hold that ball up?
Yes.
And just lastly, I just wanted to make sure I thank all our mentors, 21st Century mentors that have kind of helped, been the glue to this team and bring all these kids together and be moral support and just support all around for our entire team. So they need a huge round of applause as well. And lastly, thank you guys for having us.
Coach, let's have, as they go back to the seats, each one maybe step in and just introduce themselves. It would be wonderful.
Come on, Mr. Preston.
I'm also sure that's gonna happen tonight.
I'd prefer to shoot myself in the foot than be here.
Yeah, just say your name.
Say your name.
Alright, how about this? You're not going back to sit down until you say your name.
Hello, my name's Mark Preston.
Hi, I'm Celeste Davis.
Hi, my name...
Tyson.
My name is Tyson Smith.
Sarah Doughty.
Michael Chan.
Hi, I'm Niagua.
Hi, I'm Avery Tucker.
Hello, my name's Matt.
Hello, my name is Sabir.
My name's Matt.
Hi, I'm Ali.
Hello, my name is Kevin.
My name is Chase Levaser.
Hi, my name's Flo.
And just two people that were not able to be here tonight is Carrigan Bather and also Sopramangu.
My name is Cassidy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike, and also, if they're not here this evening, Alison Carmichael and Amy Phelps as well. Next, we'd like to recognize our 2018 wrestling team, who are the Class A South Sportsmanship recipients.
It's wonderful, and what's even, when you look at how special winning a sportsmanship banner is, we are actually in wrestling a cooperative team with Gorham, so we're Westbrook-Gorham. And we have wrestlers that have come in from Gorham, they wrestle with us, and we're one team, and they've shown how much we're better together. So it really shows not only their sportsmanship out into the league, but it shows how two communities side by side can work so well together in sports. So I'd like to call Coach Nicholas to come forward.
Hello, thanks for inviting us tonight. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'd like to also congratulate all the student athletes on the fine season. It's great to see all these accomplishments that happened over the season, so nice job. I'm gonna have the wrestlers who are here from Westbrook and Gorham come on up and display the banner. I'm just so proud of these guys. This is really an award for them, for all their hard work and being great sports throughout the whole season, and I couldn't be more proud of each and every one of them. So congratulations, guys, and look forward to doing it again next year.
So let's have you guys introduce yourselves.
I'm Henry, and I'm from Gorham.
It's back, I'm from Gorham.
I'm Ryan Shackley, I'm from Westbrook.
I'm Gabriella Taylor, and I'm also from Westbrook.
I'm Dante, and I'm also from Westbrook.
So it's just, what a great night to get us going here tonight. So we congratulate all the student athletes and look forward to seeing some other recognitions coming right out. Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize Mr. Groves, who is in his first year as our Athletic Director. One of the things that he always reminds me of is that athletics is part of our learning, is part of our development, and he's raising not just athletes who excel on the field, but athletes who excel as people. And I think that is absolutely evident tonight. So thank you, Mr. Groves. Next, we'd like to honor some of our musicians in our amazing music program. If they could all come up to the podium, I believe all these folks here. Unfortunately, Mr. Smith, our band director, is not here this evening. He's at a Maine Youth Wind Ensemble concert at Merrill Auditorium tonight. But Ms. Prue, our music director, if you could come up to the microphone just to be part of their recognition. You don't have to. Just, okay, that's okay. Lily, so these are students, are jazz musicians who have won gold medals in, I'm drawing which competition?
The state jazz competition.
State jazz competition, so.
And also at Brookley, I believe.
Awesome. So come up, Lily Benn on trombonist, Ian Douglas, a trumpeter, Connor Stackey, who plays tuba, Rachel Richards, who plays piano.
Students like to introduce who you are, what grade you're in?
They're like, no. I'm Rachel Richards, and I'm a sophomore.
Yay!
And I'm a sophomore.
Ian Douglas, I'm a senior.
Connor Stackey, and I'm a senior.
Thank you. Very proud of our jazz musicians, and if you haven't noticed, performances from our music department are posted on the music department's website. So please go and visit that site. You will be absolutely glad that you did. We have some amazing musicians in the stellar program that really is a jewel in our crown in the city. So congratulations, guys. I should also mention that our Winter Guard won a regional competition as well. Lily is part of our Winter Guard, and Rachel is on our winter percussion team that also received gold medals. So lots of recognitions all around for our music department. And one other note about our music department that wasn't on my list originally, congratulations to our jazz choir that Ms. Prue directs, who received a score of one on the district level jazz competition, which is the best score you can receive. So congratulations to our jazz choir. Now, we have a few art recognitions to make this evening, too. Every year during Student Art Month, which is the month of March, the Westbrook Women's Club organizes an art show and competition that invites students in our art programs to submit pieces of art. This year, there were over 40 submissions to this competition, to the celebration, and several of our students were recognized with honors. So Rachel or Debbie or Roberta, would you like to come up to the, the Westbrook Women's Club is...
Rachel was there.
Rachel was there.
Roberta, come on up.
Rachel Somerville is our art director. Roberta Dutton-Moral is a retired fourth grade teacher who now runs the Westbrook Women's Club with an iron gavel, right?
Yes, she does.
Right. And Debbie Bickford is our art teacher and also the president of the Maine Art Educators Association.
I am actually the past president. This is my next and my last year, so I just wanted to make that clear because...
Sure, sure. Yeah, I don't think so.
I just, I wanted to recognize everybody who participated in the Westbrook Women's Club show, and then of course also our winners. I think we have a couple here tonight. Sadie Cross, and if I say your name, please stand up. Sadie Cross, Megan Thibodeau, Deanna Altimimi, Sean McLean, and Jaslyn O'Brien. If you could give them a round of applause. Sorry, stand back up, artists, and if you can...
Show your work.
Yes, come stand and hold up your work for everyone to see. I just want to mention that this is a pretty competitive art show. The judges are, if you can stand right here, the judges are professional artists in the field and/or veteran art educators, and they spend a lot of time looking and surveying the artwork. And so just a testament to how special your pieces are, you should be really very proud of yourselves. I want to thank Roberta Moral for an amazing collaboration and tradition that we have here, and it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to be able to show their work with the greater community. I also want to recognize the genius behind this work. Deb Bickford, a veteran teacher, who knows more about art materials and techniques really than any art teacher I have ever known. So thank you, Deb, for your amazing dedication to the field, and thank you, everyone, for being here. This is an incredible celebration of just all of your talented students, so thank you so much.
Everyone, I want to thank Rachel for being at the show this year. I was on my way to Seattle to the national convention. I actually taught all day long, and then I started heading my way towards the airport, so I got a text with the winners. So make sure that I say these right. So Sadie Cross actually left school, did not feel very well this afternoon, so that's probably why. So this is first place, right? Make sure I have it right. So first place winner out of 42, I think. And then, you guys help me if I'm wrong. Now, hold on. Okay, so this is second place, Megan Thibodeau. Correct? That's gorgeous. Do I have this right? This is third. Deanna Altimimi. And honorable mention, Sean McLean and Jaslyn O'Brien. And that's all. Roberta, can you tell about how they're gonna move on, please? Because I don't, they'll move on, and you know that. I don't.
Pictures up yesterday from Deb, because a week from Saturday is our district art show, and that's being held at the Westbrook Warren Church where the women's club meet. These five pieces will be with our district, and there are four other clubs in our district. We have the same judges coming, I think. Andy Curran, who is also an art student that was graduated from Westbrook High, Linda Stanley, a retired art teacher from Westbrook High, and also Mary Brookings, who owns and operates an art studio here in Westbrook. Then they will choose from this area at least three winners and maybe an honorary, and then I will take them up to Waterville on May 10th, and they will be judged there from the state. And we have had in the past a lot from Westbrook that have gone from our club to the district to the state. So it's a wonderful endeavor, and we enjoy it. It's one of our highlights of the year. So we wish the ones that were here tonight and the other ones that weren't able to come good luck in the district, and hopefully some of them will go to the state.
We appreciate the support and the generosity of the Westbrook Women's Club for this and as well as other things that they do for our school system. And as Debbie Bickford always teaches me, these beautiful pieces of work, and not just beautiful pieces of work, they represent outstanding teaching and outstanding learning. So thank you, Debbie, and to Matt Johnson, also from Westbrook High School, for the amazing work here, as well as our entire art department, K through 12, for helping these artists produce this kind of work. So thank you, Debbie. We'd also like to recognize this evening the Westbrook High School math team, and I'll ask John Whitehead, who's the math team coach and one of our gifted and talented teachers, to introduce our students.
So thank you very much for calling us here to be recognized. This is really great to see all the different endeavors here, the athletics, the arts, and it's just really great to be part of this. So academically speaking, this is one of our, the high schools' academic competitions, the math team. And this year, we've had a great year. We have one more meet that we're gonna get to go to. This year, we were selected to represent, we won a representative from Maine to the New England Math Meet, so we'll be going to Canton, Massachusetts in a few weeks to compete against the best teams from across the, you know, across New England. So that's gonna be very exciting. And we have a couple of our members here, three of our members, I believe, are here this afternoon. I think the statistic that I really love most, kind of being math person statistics, is that this year, we have now 29 kids on the math team. So that's really great. I believe we have four or five seniors, so next year, it'll only hopefully grow more. So the students I have here today, I have Jacob Gately, if you could stand up and come on up. Jacob is our high scorer for our team that's here this evening. Very good, Jacob. Let me give him a hand. Dammy, if you could come on up as well. She's one of our top scorers as well. Sebastian Johns, who's one of our co-captains, excellent scorer as well. I got everyone. Is anyone else? I'm looking, okay. So these three have been a great part of the team, and again, I think the thing I love most about coaching the math team is seeing kids become better at math in their classrooms settings from doing, going above and beyond academically. So wish us luck in New England's in two weeks, and thank you, guys, very much.
Thanks, everyone. And before our students can be excused, I just want to congratulate all of you once again, and thank you for the people that you are and the kind of students you are, the commitment you have to your schoolwork, as well as to your sport or your art or your talent. You make us all so proud, and this is why, this is why this community is very special. You make it that way. So I appreciate everything you do, and we're very, very proud of you. So maybe we could congratulate them one last time, and then they can... So again, if you do want to leave, we encourage you to stay and learn about civics and all that, but again, we'll take a...
Take the chairs away from the tables, right? Excellent, yes. Good night, guys. You stay in your seats.
This is really great to see all the different endeavors here, the athletics, the arts, and it's just really great to be part of this. So academically speaking, this is one of our, the high schools' academic competitions, the math team. And this year, we've had a great year. We have one more meet that we're going to get to go to. This year, we were selected to represent, we won a representative for Maine to the New England Math Meet. So we'll be going to Canton, Massachusetts in a few weeks to compete against the best teams from across, you know, across New England. So that's going to be very exciting. And we have a couple of our members here, three of our members, I believe, are here this afternoon. I think the statistic that I really love most, kind of being math person statistics, is that this year, we have now 29 kids on the math team. So that's really great. I believe we have four or five seniors, so next year, it'll only hopefully grow more. So the students I have here today, I have Jacob Gately. If you could stand up and come on up. Jacob is our high scorer for our team that's here this evening. Very good, Jacob. Give him a hand. Dami, if you could come on up as well. She's one of our top scorers as well. Sebastian Johns, who's one of our co-captains and excellent scorer as well. I got everyone. Is anyone else looking? Okay. So these three have been a great part of the team. And again, I think the thing I love most about coaching the math team is seeing kids become better at math in their classrooms settings from doing, going above and beyond academically. So wish us luck in New England's in two weeks. And thank you, guys, very much.
Thanks, everyone. And before our students can be excused, I just want to congratulate all of you once again and thank you for the people that you are and the kind of students you are, the commitment you have to your schoolwork, as well as to your sport or your art or your talent. You make us all so proud, and this is why this community is very special. You make it that way. So I appreciate everything you do, and we're very, very proud of you. So maybe we could congratulate them one last time and then they can- So again, if you do want to leave, we encourage you to stay and learn about civics and all that, but again, we'll take a-
Take the chairs to win the awards, right? Excellent, yes. Good night, guys.
Thank you.
It's not today. And lucky standing yesterday. I forgot you said new Brooks to five. Did you find something to do?
Oh, looks like exactly somebody's been to-
I did either. Was it in the, was it in the envelope? How did they get notified?
Stay away, can you? Kids graduate, it's just a-
Couple of last quick things, I promise. Last quick things, part of my report. Thank you for giving us the space to honor our students. Very proud of every one of them, all of our students throughout the district. They make us shine. A couple of last quick things. I should have mentioned this while the music department was still here. The spring concert last week featured a special piece of music called Etched in Stone. It was a special commissioned piece of music written specifically for Westbrook High School in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It's described in this month's Teaching and Learning Newsletter, and again, you can find that video at the music department's website. So you can hear that beautiful piece that was written specifically for Westbrook High School and for our musicians to play. I'd like to congratulate and thank the people at Canal School and Principal Vicky Hebert. They hosted a visit from area school leaders and teachers sponsored by USM Southern Maine Partnership. They conducted a site visit to observe how we teach reading and writing throughout the district, but specifically at Canal School. Vicky and her team hosted about 20 people from the area, went into classrooms, observed how our teaching practices are, and were able to hear the great success that we're having with our approach to teaching reading and writing. So thank you, Vicky, and your entire staff, and congratulations. I keep hearing how amazed people were at what they saw at Canal School. And of course, I said, I'm not surprised. We see amazing things in all of our schools every day, but it made me very proud. And lastly, I would like to mention an event in the community that is happening on Friday mornings for families with children ages zero to three years old. There are family playgroups at the new community hub, which is on Reserve Street. It's described in the Teaching and Learning Newsletter, which will come home tomorrow and Thursday folders, but it's a free opportunity for parents and their toddlers to get together at the community space on Reserve Street to socialize, to have fun, and to make some new friends. So if you're in that category with zero to three-year-old children, please stop by on Friday mornings at the community hub on Reserve Street. And that's that. Thank you, Dr. Lancia. We'll move on to committee reports. Mike?
Nothing at this time.
Veronica? Sue?
We just have some policy changes on our fundraiser booster on request forms, and we'll be discussing that later.
Okay, Steve?
Nothing.
Maureen?
Yes, we had a ed program meeting and we had an update on the proficiency-based curriculum plans and also the improvement plans for the middle school math program. And then lastly, social and emotional learning incentive plans we discussed.
Okay, thank you. Move on to old business. 11.1, adoption of fiscal year 2019 Westbrook School Department Budget, second and final reading. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Sue. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. Dr. Lancia, roll call. Veronica Bates?
Yes.
Stephen Berry?
Yes.
Odilia Harmon? Suzanne Joyce?
Yes.
Noreen Poitras?
No.
Mike Popovich?
Yes.
Chair James Violet? Yes, that is five in favor, one opposed. Motion passes. 11.2, request to approve the 2018-2019 school year calendar. Action item, final approval. It's been moved by Sue, seconded by Veronica. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Nope. Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. 11.3, request to adjust, two adjustments to the 1718 calendar for snow days. Action item, final approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Noreen, seconded by Veronica. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Yes, Veronica?
Just wanted to let Peter know and the administration that I heard a lot of feedback about this particular change and that it was very positive. Parents were very grateful that it wasn't Saturdays, that we were not going to go to the 20th, that you had made a smart choice to do it this way. So thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. 11.4, request to approve an overnight trip for model UN students to attend the state Model United Nations Conference at USM Gorham, Maine, May 16th, 2018 to May 18th, 2018. Action item, final approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Veronica. Questions or comments from members of the committee?
Oh, if you have one question?
Yes.
This is during school time. I'm assuming that, you know, there are measures in place for students to make up the work that they will miss?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. We'll move on to new business. 12.2, request to adopt the Westbrook School Policy, School Department Policy JJE Student Fundraising Activities. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Sue. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Yes.
Sue, can you explain what the changes are?
Actually, I was going to have Jody come up on the desk. I don't have a section here, so. Jody, do you want to put on the student fundraising activities?
Yeah. This is actually an addition. So we had a fundraising policy that covered our booster groups. We did not have a general fundraising policy, so this is a general fundraising policy that we added to our policies.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. 12.3, request to approve changes to Westbrook School Department Policy JJIBC, relations with boosters groups. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Veronica, seconded by Sue. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. 12.4, request to delete the Westbrook School Department Policy JJIBC-R fundraising booster group responsibilities. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Sue, seconded by Mike. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Sue?
This is just, what we did is combined application. We had two duplicate questionnaires or duplicate forms to complete, and so what we did is just combined under one.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. 12.5, request to delete the Westbrook School Department Policy JJIBC-E1 fundraiser request form. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Mike, seconded by Sue. Questions or comments from members of the committee?
And the rationale for this one? Is this the part of the gathering?
Jody or Sue?
I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. There was a dash, oh, a dash R that were procedures that will now be in the handbook. And then we condensed two forms, as Sue said.
Okay, so this was a part of one of those condensed?
Correct, yep.
Okay. It's all I need. We just had a lot of duplication, so we're just trying to make it easier. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. 12.6, request to delete the Westbrook School Department Policy JJIBC-E2 fundraising and gift approval form. Action item, first approval. What are the wishes of the committee? It's been moved by Noreen, seconded by Sue. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? That is six in favor and none opposed. That brings us to important dates. April 12th, tomorrow at 7:00 PM, we'll be presenting the fiscal year 2019 school budget to the city council's finance committee. Yes, and that's going to be here in room 114. April 16th is Patriots Day. There'll be no school. Central office will be closed. April 17th through the 20th is spring vacation. There'll be no school. Central office will be open. April 23rd at 6:00 PM, there will be a policy committee meeting at central office. The 25th of April at 6:00 PM, there'll be an ed programs committee meeting at central office. May 2nd at 6:00 PM, there'll be a finance committee meeting at central office. And then on May 9th at 7:00 PM here in room 114, we'll have a school committee meeting. So this brings us to our second public participation, where anybody can speak on any school-related matter for three minutes. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak?
I just wanted to point out one thing that I don't think-
You're on TV, so we gotta, if you could give us your name and your address.
Matt Stacky, I'm 10-year-old circle in Westbrook. And I just want to point out when the music kids are here that the jazz performance was particularly impressive because they give, not only did the ensemble win a gold medal, which is, since they changed the rules a couple of years ago and the scoring is very hard to do, but the, in four individuals that were here tonight, they give out, out of all the bands in each division, they give out five outstanding musicianship awards. And two of the five in each of the two divisions were Westbrook kids. And not only that, they do the first four. And then the fifth one is called the Dale Hoff Award. It's named after a longtime educator who was recognized as like the best, if you will, out of the five, which Rachel won. So I know that, you know, it's really special and like four out of the 10 kids from the state that were recognized as outstanding.
Came from Westbrook.
Well, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Do you have an announcement?
I have an announcement.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to thank the administrators here, specifically Wendy Harvey, who organized the high school SAT this week and the science augmentation test that's tomorrow, and Patty Di Maria, who organized the middle school program for about 800 students, all being tested for the MEAs. It's a ton of work, and the elementary principals did their fair share of work in organizing that, too. And I think we can look forward to the best participation rates and all of those assessments that we've had in a long time. So awesome job, everybody.
All right.
Any other announcements?
One thing that I failed to mention earlier.
That's all right. Go ahead. I'd like to thank Louis Lampren and the Paper City Classic for a donation of $500 that they made to our school department. So thank you, Louis, and to the Paper City Classic, the Paper City Hoops organization. We appreciate that. And next week is school vacation week, or actually, it starts on Friday. Make sure you're reading all vacation. Make sure you're reading every single day. The more we read, the more we learn. So make sure everyone is participating in Westbrook reads over this vacation. Any other announcements? Seeing none. I just want to close by saying thank you to the finance committee. Thank you for the school committee, the student reps, Dr. Lancia, all administrators. It wasn't the easiest of budgets, not as bad as past years, but, you know, again, there had to be some tough decisions made. You know, you just need to remember the school committee, first and foremost wants to provide the best for you folks and all of our children. But again, we're elected by taxpayers to be concerned about mill rates and property taxes and the impact that those people have trying to live every single day. We look forward to presenting this to the city council tomorrow. Again, even though it's passed here, we're hoping that the city council, we met with them yesterday morning, can appreciate the work put into our budget and hopefully pass it with flying colors. So, but we still have one more, two hurdles to go. We gotta go through the city council and hopefully they approve the budget that we just approved this evening. And then if they approve it, then it goes to the budget validation vote, which will be at the June primary. So, you know, hopefully we get, sell our work ahead of us, but hopefully smooth sailing at this point. But again, I want to thank everybody that was involved in this budget. Again, tough decisions had to be made, but again, what you need to understand is, our concern is for the improvement of our school system, and hopefully we've done that and that we can move forward. So, all right. Motion to adjourn. Everybody, again, we are adjourned.